Hey Larry. Hey Larry.
Brenda.
Yes.
All right. How you doing today?
I'm good. What about you?
We here.
That's a good thing.
Yes.
Hey Brenda.
Hey Sandy.
Hello Melvin, I see Melvin.
I don't see you Sandy, I see Larry and Melvin.
Oh, okay, let's see.
There you are Sandy.
Okay, I don't know what I did because I still want to be around here.
Haley wants to get in on it, you hear her barking?
Tell her she can vote. She has a vote.
Sugar sat in my lap last time, Haley wants to bark today. Sandy, before we get started.
Can you move the phone out of the way, we can see the back of the phone on your desk.
What now? Oh, move the phone, okay, is that better?
Perfect.
Okay, perfect, thanks.
Sandy.
Yes.
Has David Hudson called you?
I have not heard from him.
Okay. He's had some questions about the archery range and I'll, I'll let him explain it to you or I'll tell you something later.
Okay, well yeah, tell him to please call me anytime. Yeah. Happy. Uh huh, yeah, I think, so far so good. Do, who has the invocation tonight, do we know?
It might be man, I don't know.
Is that, is that already in Danny?
Brenda, Thelma had it last time, so it probably is you.
Okay, well I'll just get Al, Larry you can pray for me. Larry. He can't hear. He need to unmute. Unmute Larry. Are you sitting up? I may see how I do. Did you get it Larry? Larry.
Show him again Brenda, do it again.
You think he got it?
I saw it but.
Now Mel, um, we'll get Al or Melvin to pray for me, Melvin you can pray for me.
Brenda.
Yeah.
Can you see me and hear me?
I hear you but I don't see you.
Oh, oh, you should hear me then, that's good.
Hi Thelma, I see you.
Oh, okay, I see you too, okay, okay.
Oh yeah, I see you now.
Oh, okay.
Al. Al.
Yes. Yes.
Al.
I'm here.
Would you do, would you do invocation for me please?
I will.
Okay, thank you.
Hey Mary.
Hello.
No difference in size, you talk like regular conversation, there was no problem with it.
Melvin you off today?
No.
Oh.
I've been there since 4:30.
Oh wow.
I just left, left to come here to visit with y'all.
And then you going back?
I ain't planning on it.
Okay.
Okay, well y'all, it's 5 o'clock, so I guess we can, we'll call our meeting to order. I know, is Anthony, Anthony are you on this?
Yes ma'am.
Okay, I couldn't, I couldn't hear you, okay, good, just checking in. Okay, I think we have everyone, I would, Brenda are we, we're calling on Al for the invocation?
Yes ma'am.
Okay, Al?
Thank you mayor, let's, let's pray. Lord, we thank you for this beautiful day, we thank you for the light at the end of the tunnel on this pandemic we have all been dealing with here. We ask your special blessings upon all our leaders and as they help and guide us out of this situation and most especially, we need your leadership, God, to bring us out. We ask special blessings upon the small businesses that have been affected by this and we ask you to help them be creative and find ways out of this. In Jesus' name we pray, amen.
Amen. In light of not having the flag and not all being together, I think we're going to forego, I'm recommending we forego the pledge of allegiance and wait until we're all back in our council room with the flag, so. Next item on the agenda is approval of minutes. Public hearing is held on April 7th, 2020 at 4:45 PM and regular meeting is held on April 7th, 2020 at 5:00 PM. Do we have any, and are there any amendments or corrections to the minutes? I would actually like to make a change where we appointed this committee under Billy Black and in the minutes it reads that it is for the crisis committee for the COVID-19 pandemic, but actually, this committee is really a civil defense committee that will be in place to deal with not only this pandemic, but any other types of emergencies such as hurricanes or tornadoes or whatever other crises may, may be headed our way. So, I just wanted to make that recommendation for that change. Do we have any discussion on that?
No, that's fine.
Okay, do we have a motion then to approve the minutes with that correction?
I make a motion to approve the minutes with the corrections.
I see. We have a, okay Thelma, okay, all in favor? Any opposed? Unanimous, okay, thank y'all. Okay, the next item is a civil southeast street resurfacing agreement and that agreement is that their services, our construction cost on the street repave, the street repaving project is $318,990 with an agreement with them, their engineering fee is $15,800 for a total project cost of $334,790 and that is all coming out of the city's capital budget along with the money that we're getting this year from Rebuild Alabama. This is not grant money, this is capital funds plus our Rebuild Alabama allocation. So, do we have any discussion on this? Do we have a motion to approve the agreement for engineering services?
I make that in the form of a motion.
I second it.
Okay, thank y'all. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Unanimous, okay. The next item is Resolution 2020-04-001 which is a resolution authorizing the city of Monroe to accept bids for the 2020 local resurfacing project, whereas the city of Monroe is requiring construction bids for project number 20M2603, 2020 local resurfacing project and has legally advertised for construction bids. Now therefore be it resolved that the city of Monroe accepts construction bids for project number 20M2603, 2020 local resurfacing project on Wednesday, April 29th, 2020 at 2:00 PM at Monroe City Hall. So, do we have any discussion on the resolution? Bid opening will be outside next, April 29th, which is next Wednesday at 2:00 PM on the steps of City Hall. Any discussion on that? We have a motion to approve the bid opening.
I'll make a motion.
Thank you Anthony.
I second it.
Okay, thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, unanimous, okay. Next resolution is Resolution 2020-04-002 for the canine park. Whereas the city of Monroe, Alabama realizes the need for a designated area for residents and guests to bring canines to run freely, socialize and allow networking of pet owners and whereas the city council desires to provide an area on city property to construct a canine park with appropriate parking, lighting and safety concerns being met, now therefore be resolved by the city council of the city of Monroe, Alabama as follows. Section 1, the city of Monroe hereby designates an area located on municipal property of the city located on a parcel behind the Y in the southwest corner, quarter of Section 11, T6 North, R7 East with an appropriate buffer of existing trees and vegetation from other amenities within the park. Section 2, nothing in this resolution shall be construed as dedicating this property as parkland or creating a permanent site for a dog park. Adopted this 22nd day of April 2020. Do we have any discussion on our resolution?
I have one little question on it, in the first paragraph of that, whereas, the second paragraph where is, lighting and safety concerns being met, what, what limit, what liability we have by making it as formal statement?
Yeah, the lighting is not going to be an issue because it is not going to be open at night. It is only open dawn to dusk, I mean, you know, it's, it's daylight hours only.
Okay, I still questioning, when, when we're not supervising it directly there that, I'm not saying that we still won't have some liability concerns, but the fact of stating it in this resolution, I have some questions about.
We have, we have some signage going out there, you know, Melvin, that, just to say that the city assumes, you know, just like we do at parks, that we have, we assume no liability. And they, the dog park, the people that are putting in the dog park are also providing some very specific signage as to the small dog park and the larger dog park. So there is going to be some specific signage out there. They had said they were going to be out there this week putting in some dog, I don't know, some type of amenities for the dogs, but to be honest with you, I have not been out. I went out there Monday, but I haven't gotten out there today. So I, I don't know how far they've gotten with it. But the fencing is all up, it looks great. It's, it's, of course, once, we can't open it until we get through this COVID stuff, but hopefully we'll be able to open it soon.
That's the only thing, do you think that we still should, I mean if everybody's fine with that, but if you think we should actually have the safety concerns being met? I'm just questioning, are we covering all safety concerns and by it being needed to be put in print like this in the resolution? Can we not have that part? Can we have not that part in the written resolution? I understand we're doing everything we can, but do we need to have that wording in the resolution?
Well, I wouldn't think necessarily, I see what you're saying, where is.
Somebody come back and say, somebody come back and say if some dog, a person got bit, well y'all said you would take care of all safety concerns, that they would be admitted and that wouldn't be one, I'm just, I understand all the signage and everything else, but is, does that need to be in there?
Well, I kind of agree with you Melvin, that where we might want to do is just say whereas the city council desires to provide an area on city property to construct a canine park, period. We can just do period there.
You can say, say appropriate parking and lighting, but didn't stop, stop there.
Yeah, yeah, that's, that's good, you want to get that changed.
Anybody else having thoughts about that?
I agree with you Mel.
Okay, so Anthony, you're, you agree with that too? Well, we'll just, we can just write that other part of it.
Yes ma'am.
Okay, okay. Well, with that recommended change, do we have any other discussion on that? Okay, okay. Um, well, with that recommended change, um, do we have any other discussion on that? Okay, do we have a motion to approve Resolution twenty twenty oh four oh oh two with that change?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Melvin.
I'll second it.
Thank you, Brenda. All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Any opposed? unanimous. Um, okay, the next item we have, um, is, as y'all know, our corny soil your business incubator was hit pretty hard with some of these storms. And we have been in contact with both Mike Cockwood and Amick. So we have moved forward and are now ready to, uh, get to the point where we accept the bids for fixing this. Um, because it was caused by a storm, um, it is an emergency repair that has to be done as quickly as possible. So, um, the first thing we need to do is to move forward with declaring that roof an emergency roof repair, so we can move forward rapidly with the repairs. Um, so, um, this will, is an emergency, emergency affecting our, uh, safety and welfare for those who are in the business incubator. So, do we have, um, any discussion on declaring it an emergency?
Will there be any insurance coverage in that or we don't know at this time?
No, we do know what our insurance coverage is. We have gotten a, we've actually received one check from Amick. And then we have an allowance for more and where we are is, and Tim's going to go and explain this in detail, but we are under the amount that they're allocating for us to fix it. Yeah. So, um, um, do I have, first, we're going to need a motion to declare an emergency roof repair.
I make a motion.
I second it.
Okay, so all in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Any opposed? unanimous. Okay, next, um, Tim, if you are on here, would you, uh, please go over where we are with the, uh, roof, the bids and what it's going to take?
Okay, so can y'all hear me?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay, so we, we had four roof bids. Um, Amick and I discussed them and we dropped the lowest and the highest. And the two in the middle were pretty much on track. Uh, we are, I'm highly leaning toward, uh, awarding this and Amick is looking over the last bit of stuff tonight and they're going to give me the word tomorrow. It's, it's kind of our choice since it's in the insurance, uh, sworn statement of loss adjustment in their price. Uh, so Willoughby Roofing out of, they're kind of all over the southeast, but it's out of the Pittsco office, has the best price per square foot and the best warranty. Uh, so they're going to, hopefully tomorrow morning, we give them the contract to do the roof. Hammer is the only commercial contractor in town. They're going to repair the wall. We're going to repair the roof deck between Hammer and Green Products is going to make the roof deck. And it's all in the price and I can break that price out if you want to see it in person, but it's kind of complicated to do over the video. So, anybody got a question? No.
Good, Tim, I think.
Okay.
Yeah, a good, it's, Tim has spent a lot of time on it and I appreciate everything you've done, Tim. Um, so I, we're going to need a motion to approve the contracts with Willoughby Roofing, Hammer and, um.
Green Products.
Green Products for the roof repair. So, do we have a motion to approve those?
I also move.
Okay, Melvin.
Second.
Okay, who seconded? I couldn't.
Al.
Al, okay, thank you, Al. Okay, all in favor?
Uh.
Any opposed? Okay, unanimous. Okay, um, okay, the next item, um, is that I had is that we appointed last, our last, um, council meeting, we appointed the Civil Defense Committee. And I wanted to add Sam Shaw to that committee. Um, he was not officially appointed and Billy, we actually met for the first time today. And Billy's going to give the gist of that meeting to y'all a little later, but, um, I wanted to add Sam Shaw as a, as a committee member for our utilities. Um, does anyone, do we have any discussion on that? Um, do we have a motion to approve adding Sam to the Civil Defense Committee?
I make a motion.
Okay, do we have a second?
I'll second. Anthony made the motion. I second.
Okay, thanks. Thanks, y'all. Okay, all in favor?
Hi.
Any opposed? unanimous. Okay, um, the next item I have is that, um, we, I have appointed, I'd like to appoint a Business Recovery Committee. We actually, I have appointed a committee. Um, we, the council, all the council or honorary members of this, um, it is chaired by Paul England. And the purpose of this is to assist particularly our non-essential, the businesses that are termed non-essential, um, with reopening those and providing anything we can to, um, ensure that they have a smooth opening and that we get these businesses up and running as soon as possible. Um, we had a preliminary meeting last Friday and we have a follow-up meeting this Friday at ten. Um, in the meeting we had last Friday, we discussed, um, various grant opportunities, small business loans, um, some marketing ideas. And with the constant change that we have with COVID nineteen, um, we are going to meet again this Friday and assess where we are. And hopefully, we will know it at some point soon when we can get those businesses open. And then to have some programs, um, our D R A is going to meet under Al to, um, look at some things that the D R A might be able to recommend to the council. And so, um, anyway, on that committee, um, it will be chaired by Paul England, all council members, where our honorary members and several of y'all I know have attended the first meeting. Um, Darlene Thompson, Penelope Huns, Mary Jackson, Chuck Downing, Frank Dobson, Anne Marie Ryan, Patty Welch, Tanya Lambert and Sam Shaw. So that is who we have on the committee. It's a very boots-on-the-ground group, um, kind of like our civil defense. But I think, um, this might help provide some marketing and directions for when, uh, we can actually see these businesses opening. And, um, we look forward to that. So, um, do we have any discussion on that? I know some of y'all jump in because you were part of the call. Okay, do we have a motion to, uh, to officially appoint this committee?
I'll make a motion.
Thank you, Brenda. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Larry. All in favor?
Hi.
Any opposed? Okay, thank y'all. unanimous. Look forward to getting back to some kind of normal. Okay, um, next we have manners to be presented by department heads. Mary, do you have anything?
No, ma'am.
Okay, thank you, Mary. Billy?
Yes, ma'am. Uh, can y'all hear me?
Uh-huh.
Yeah, but. This morning, we had the, uh, the meeting and several of you attended and we certainly appreciate that. Uh, and we had a lot of good information come out of that. Of course, we gave the update on the latest, uh, COVID from County and the city. Uh, Angie from the Emergency Department was on and she gave a lot of information and answered a lot of questions uh, for stuff that we can relay back to the public and just make us more aware. And some of the things that we did determine out of that meeting is our, uh, public housing, our representative for that, uh, has determined that a lot of the people in public housing don't have the information uh, about the COVID and some of the things that they can do to protect themselves or things they don't need to do. Uh, so with that, a, uh, a newsletter is going to be created. The hospital is going to take that on and get it to, uh, Tammy Labella. And she's going to disperse that information to all public housing within the city for the tenants, uh, for educational stuff. They'll have the hotline for the hospital and different things like that, some stuff they'd look for. Uh, in addition to Ms. Kay Lett was on and, uh, she, uh, we asked her to represent basically the general public. And she has some good, uh, questions about possibly May first, when the governor allows businesses to reopen and stuff. Now, how are we going to regulate churches and the groups and so on? And so it was a lot of good brainstorming in that aspect on how we can do that. And, uh, they asked Dr. Broughton, which also is a pastor, uh, to help disseminate some of that information to the faith-based organizations. So they've already worked on that since that meeting to date. Um, but it's kind of in synopsis. That was everything. Uh, there is going to be some additional P P E that's not coming in that the E M A is getting. They're going to disperse that to hospitals. Um, and they are also going to provide some of those to the public housing. Because one of the, the concerns were about cleaning or going in. They really didn't know proper procedures, what they needed to do. So they're going to do some training with them as well. So it was a really good meeting, uh, and, uh, this will set up maybe a date, uh, within the next week or two to be able to, um, see what all is taking place and, uh, as we get closer to the possibly everything opening back up.
Great. Thanks, Billy. Do you have anything else?
No, ma'am.
Okay, and y'all, I, I do apologize, uh, before I, Mandy, before I get to you, I realize I completely skipped over our council members. So let me start that chain right now. Al, do you have anything?
Just that the D R A may be coming back to the council for some additional funding perhaps, uh, depending on what we come up with in our meeting, so.
Thank you. Appreciate. And is that meeting the twenty-second or the twenty-ninth?
Wednesday, the twenty-ninth.
Okay, thank you, Al. Um, okay, um, Selma?
Oh, I don't have anything.
Okay, um, Brenda?
I know, um, uh, Tim.
Yes, ma'am.
Did you, uh, look into that, what I asked you about?
I did.
Okay, okay.
I've, I've gotten a letter written, but there's, it's in a, um, I, I can talk to you about it. I don't, we don't have to talk about it.
Okay, okay. That's fine. Thank you.
Okay.
Um, Brenda, do you have anything else?
No, ma'am. Thank you.
Okay, Anthony?
I don't.
Thank you. Larry?
Y'all, splash pad been completed. I haven't been out there in about a week.
Larry, thank you for, I meant to tell y'all, the splash pad is complete, but we have not had a walkthrough with the company. And we have a walkthrough, but we don't know when it is because of this COVID thing. But they are supposed to, um, come and do the walkthrough, which I've asked, uh, Michael Lassiter and I want Ricky to be the present when we do the walkthrough. Um, but it, it hasn't happened, so we're just, we're just kind of in a holding pattern with the splash pad right now.
A walk-through or a splash-through?
Well, if, we could have a splash-through. I'll let y'all know when that is, so y'all can all come out for it. Okay?
Thank you.
Thank, yeah, thanks, Larry. Um, do you have anything else?
No, I'm good.
Okay. Melvin?
Uh, question, uh, if we discuss anything about community house, we shut it down for this month. Are we going to wait till, uh, May first to make a decision there? Or is that at least considered in what we're discussing now or not?
Well, we, we were kind of waiting until, I was really thinking we should wait until the governor comes back to open the non-essential businesses.
Okay, that's, that's, you know, that's fine. I just, yeah, I have not mentioned that. And because I've been asked that question because there's some things scheduled in May and they're wondering at what point in time that they may know something. And I told them it probably the first of May, but we're not actually meeting at that point in time. That if we called, would we call it an emergency session or would it be in some of this discussion of what, when y'all sit down as committee and discuss?
Well, Melvin, I think the council, that's something we really need to think about is, you know, the reopening of the community house, assuming, you know, non-essential businesses open May first. But the thing that we kept hearing and we talked about a lot today in our meeting with Billy's group is this distancing thing.
Yeah.
Um, and so that's something, please, you know, share your thoughts there.
I'm, I'm, I'm in agreement to that. If, if, you know, and any conditions on the early end would probably be some type of limited, some percentage of capacity maybe, but that would probably be the, the best case scenario.
Yeah, yeah. We haven't, I mean, what we might have to do is if things are reopening before our next council meeting, which is May the, uh, fifth or sixth. Fourth, yeah, that we might, we might have to have a special meeting.
Mayor, um, one, some of the stuff I've read, uh, I feel like they probably May first are going to allow the business to reopen, but you're still going to have to maintain a lower occupancy level. It's going to have to maintain smaller groups, things like that. Like your restaurants are still going to be at a minimal capacity and so on. Probably, I think the date I saw was until maybe May fifteenth.
Okay, well, we will meet again, like you said, May the fourth. So, um, Billy, that might be something on that capacity. Could you make some recommendations on the capacity for the community house under these guidelines?
Okay, we'll, uh, we'll look at it because I think basically what they're doing is based, going to twenty-five percent capacity.
Okay.
Which, which in a lot of cases, especially weddings, that would be more acceptable because they could at least go through with it and, uh, and, and it probably closely limited the family, which is probably what they'd be in the church situation also. But again, we want to do the safe thing, but just, just want that to be considered is all.
Yeah. Well, you know, Melvin, I saw that the state, their recommendation, like on a restaurant, they were recommending you could have no more than six people at a table. But, I mean, I think that if we could just recommend capacity, we would be, don't you think we'd be all right?
Yeah, I, I think so, but it just all, all, the only thing I'm bringing it up for, I'm not pro or con against it. It's just to have it thought about because I hadn't heard anything mentioned of that yet.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you. Um, do you have anything else, Melvin?
No, that'll do it. Glad to see you, Chief Armstrong.
Thank you.
Yes, Chief, uh, Chief, you're on. It's your, your time.
I don't have anything, ma'am.
Well, I just, I know that y'all have had a lot going and we appreciate all you're doing. And, um, you know, just, uh, uh, one thing, I think we might want to discuss this curfew though, while, while you're, um, one thing we talked about was we had put that curfew in place for the COVID nineteen crisis. And in our call today, we talked about what would happen when the governor opens these non-essential businesses. And, um, Chuck from the E M A, and I believe the sheriff and Mandy, I'm, I'm not, don't want to speak for you, but feel like the curfew is really causing more problems than solving problems. So we may want to, uh, just keep in mind that we might want to lift the curfew, um, at such time as we get reopened.
I think that would behoove us as the, as the police department. I can't speak for the sheriff's department.
Okay, but that Chuck kind of did, but yeah.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, okay. So just wanted to mention that and thank y'all for what you're doing. Anything else, Mandy?
No, ma'am.
Okay, um, Michael Lassiter? Michael?
He's not on here.
Oh, he's not. Okay, and I guess I forgot to say anything to Anthony, so, um, Tim?
No, I'm good.
Okay, Sandra?
She's not on.
Okay.
And Don's not either.
Don's not. Okay.
Al, is she with you?
No, she's not. Thank you.
Okay.
Okay, um, then if we have no further business, does anyone have any other business? Then, um, do we have a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion, we adjourn. Yeah, I second.
Okay, all in favor?
Hi.
Any opposed? Okay, y'all go forth and do great things. Thanks.